Good evening and Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Good New Year.
Thanks for coming. It's time for our January 4th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. The materials have been set out and posted. The first item, as usual, is the approval of the minutes of the last meeting on December 7th, which I think I left at home. I had no issues with them. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you.
I'd approve it to the meeting.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Addition, subtraction? Thank you, Jennifer. Hearing none. Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Dale?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Wayne?
Hi.
Reeve?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Hi.
Carl?
Hi.
Okay. The next item is the two worksheets that Jeff Lacy did on 37 Interleakin. I told him that here he comes, right on time, Jeff.
The ones I forgot.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
We just finished the minutes, so you are the next item. I trust everybody has had a chance to look at the one-pagers or two-pagers, the density negative and the density neutral versions of an estimate of dwelling units permitted under NHRPZ.
Good one, Jennifer.
Jeff, do you want to provide an overview or highlight particular aspects of your work before we go to any questions or comments?
Sure. Yeah, let me provide an overview and then I will respond as appropriate, depending on how much we want to get into this. So, looking at the Jacisto property, which I did visit and spent, I don't know, 45 minutes there tromping around last month, I was asked to do a comparison between the NHRPZ and what might be a conventional development scenario. This has nothing to do with the big building itself or the proposal that you had previously received. This is strictly if the property were to be developed residentially in as a subdivision, which I guess the developer has indicated he may do. That would probably mean, probably mean the house comes down. But anyway, so I started doing it and I was using a worksheet, NRPC worksheet, and this is a worksheet that if you pass this bylaw, I would make you one that would be suitable for you to use and for applicants to use. And it really, sort of like an IRS form, it's a plug and chug with numbers that come from mapping. So you map a property and you find out its overall size, you find out how much is in the R2 zone, how much is in R4, the amount of wetlands, steep slopes, other types of things. And then you enter those values in the right-hand column and you go down and you determine the number of dwelling units that's allowed, the amount of open space that must be preserved, and the remaining developable land that can be developed for those allowable units. So I started doing all this stuff using this sheet, but forgetting that you folks had, your draft eight, which is the most recent draft, is a density-neutral draft. I had done that at the request of the board, changed some numbers, made it approximately density-neutral. So I did the whole analysis density-negative at first because that happened to be the way this sheet was set up. That's the way all the other ones that I do are. So then I kind of realized I need to do a density-neutral one to reflect your current draft eight, so you know what your current draft says. So that's why you have two pages. One says density-neutral, the title is in yellow. The other says density-negative. So there's two different pages and they're like a page and a half. The first part is a table. Then it starts with notes at the bottom. There's the first note is on the first page and then it flips over and there's notes two through seven. And these notes are the same on both and they help explain what I did and some of the assumptions I made and methodologies. So, that was kind of the project. If you look through these, you will see green numbers and red numbers. The green numbers in each sheet represent the NHRPZ numbers, whether they be density-neutral or density-negative. The red numbers represent my approximation of what a conventional development might be. And they are italicized in red. And those numbers, conventional numbers are the same on both sheets. The NHRPZ numbers differ. So, why don't I just point out, I can ask you questions about methodology and other things, but why don't I just point out sort of the bottom line of these sheets? You go through the density-neutral one first. Start with the density-neutral because that's the draft eight. That's the bylaw that you have. That's your most evolved bylaw. So you start out with 313 acres, total property, and row number five is the first important number. And under the NHRPZ, this is density-neutral, you get 18.2 units total. And in the conventional, you actually get 18. So it's roughly the same. Remember, this is density-neutral, so probably should be about the same. You look down at 11, those are total dwelling units from, actually, no, the 18.2, it comes from the R2, right? Number nine, 38.6, that comes from the R4, all right? So NHRPZ will give you 18.2 from the R2, 38.6 from the R4. Conventional will give you 18 from the R2, 34 from the R4. The bottom line is number 11. You get 56 units from the NHRPZ and you get 52 conventionally. So the way this worked out, actually, a little surprisingly, is that you get four more units with the NHRPZ density-neutral. Okay, so now you know how many units you're dealing with. You go to the next one, which is open space. And using the numbers in your current bylaw, you arrive at number 15, which is 211 acres of open space. 67%, that's under your density-neutral. Acres of open space preserved in a conventional layout, none necessarily. There may be some, but it's voluntary. You can't require it. So, that's what you've got there. And then the developable land, in the NHRPZ, you get 103 and in the conventional, you get 203. So you have 103 for NHRPZ and that's contrasted with the 211 of open space. So it's roughly a third, a third, one-third developed, two-thirds open space. In the conventional, you have about 203 acres of developable land. And one assumption I made right through with the conventional was the land to the west, where it rises up steeply over to the West Stockbridge border. And I believe that land is, it's remote, it's steep, and it may be subject to the Scenic Mountains Act, Berkshire Scenic Mountains Act. So that land, to me, just was worth kind of disregarding. It's too hard to get to, very steep, possibly subject to other regulations. So I took that right out of the conventional calculation. So that's how, that's how things work out density-neutral. And you can compare that with the next sheet. You just put them right together, side by side. And I'll run you through the numbers. I'll run you through the numbers of dwelling units. You go right down to row 11. Density-neutral, you get 56. Density-negative, you get 34. Conventional in both cases is 52. So you can see, you get quite a few more units with density-neutral than you do with density-negative. Then if you go down to the open space, number 15, open space in density-neutral is 211 acres, 67%. Open space in density-negative is 242, which is 77%. And then developable land, density-neutral, 103 acres developable, density-negative 71. And again, it's the same with the conventional. So, this kind of, you know, these results just show you what you've got now, your draft, density-neutral compared to conventional and what most of these bylaws that I've written anyway would provide under the density-negative scenario. And, let's see. I guess the notes are... An interesting note is number seven. I noted from visiting the site, in all scenarios, there are two principal areas suitable for development. First is the land up front. It has road frontage. It's open, it surrounds the existing structures. That's one area and that ends where the wetlands come across at the rear. And the second developable area, the wooded land, beyond the wetlands and up to the steep westerly mountainside. In a conventional scenario, in order to meet your lot size and frontage requirements that your town has in its zoning, both of these areas would have to be developed, pretty fully. You'd have no choice. To get those, to get that amount of units with those lot sizes and those frontages, you'd have to put them up front and you'd have to put them in the back. That's not necessarily the case with either NHRPZ approach because of the lot size and frontage flexibility. Provided you could deal with water and sewage disposal, you might be able to get all of the units in one or the other of those areas. Wouldn't necessarily have to develop both of those areas, I wouldn't think. So, that's my verbose little summary.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify, one question I had. The lots per acre, or the acres per lot, I should say, is a function of the remaining development acreage divided by the number of units, right? By the number of maximum dwelling units?
There's one intermediate step. I took the developable land and took out 15% for roads and inefficiencies. Then I divided by the number of lots.
Okay, and the 15% for roads and utilities is not in your, the first part of the spreadsheet, the first part of your worksheet?
It is, it does figure into the calculations for NHRPZ. But that's not a, that's not, that's just for the purpose of calculating a number. It's not really a practical, it's not really a practical subtraction. You take 10% away. You do that in your current, your current cluster bylaw. So part of the formula is taking 10% away and I do that early on. But in the end, when you end up with a developable land figure of 103 or 77, that's developable land in total. And that will include house lots and that will include streets and utilities and inefficiencies. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be accurate if I just divided it into 103. I need to get 15% out of there first for those roads.
Okay.
It seems like it could be duplicative, but it isn't.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any other questions of Jeff? Patrick, any thoughts from the one apparent public member of the, at this meeting? You're muted, I think.
My son, my son doesn't work on this computer. I'll log in from my phone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I feel like there's a disconnect between this and prior proposals for this, you know, this parcel, and I'm a little confused, but it's very interesting.
Well, I think prior proposals may not have been as... Well, first of all, were done before Jeff had a look at the lay of the land, which he did, you know, six weeks ago, for what that's worth. And I think it's worth something. He had a sense of what the actual land looked like. Before that, all he'd seen was the present owner's development proposal. And of course, this is quite different, no question about it. It still produces numbers that are significantly lower than what the current owner had or has in mind. No doubt about that. Any other comments or questions for Jeff?
I had a question.
Sure.
So with your scenario like this, that say three-quarters of the land would be for open space and density-negative, so if you needed to put in septic systems for all these units that are going in, does that go in the open space or is that part of the quarter of the left of the land to be developed?
The, if you look at the last, the last row, the average lot under NHRPZ would be 1.7 acres. That would be the average lot. Generally, you need a quarter of an acre per bedroom for a house. 1.7 would get you close to seven bedrooms worth of house. So that seems to be a commodious lot size to accommodate a well and a septic system under Title V.
So how much land do you need for a septic system for seven bedrooms?
You need 1.75 acres.
No, for, just for the septic system?
No, 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 no. That's how big the overall lot has to be, to have a, to have a well and a septic system on it. So the septic system is much smaller than that. But that's the land you need to take up the nitrogen that's produced by the system. So you need 10,000 square feet per bedroom. So 1.7 acres would get you seven bedrooms at the max, which is an enormous house.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, Jeff, that 1.7 includes what would be required for a septic system to be on that parcel.
That would be the average lot size, for the whole lot, so the...
And it could, and it could tolerate a septic system that would accommodate a seven-bedroom house. Is that, is that the point, Jeff?
Yes. Yes, so a normal house of three or four or five bedrooms would fit on there fine with a well on site. And, you know, as in any development project, I mean, these are, these represent the maximum number of lots you could get. If you got out there and you couldn't get a perk, there was ledge, some other problem, you may not get quite this many lots.
Right, there are other issues. Did that answer your question, Nancy? Yeah, Patrick?
I mentioned 37 Interleakin, obviously, sewer goes right up to there. And beyond that, we've had many very small parcels in like Beachwood Lake Drive, whatever, where they put in the new, you know, kind of the next-generation septic on very small parcels for two, three, even four-bedroom houses. So I don't think there's any standard anymore for how much land you need for septic. I mean, it's really how much you want to spend on high tanks or any of the other new things they have.
But wouldn't that be a question for Title V to come?
Yeah, always. You know, it's just like, it's just that it doesn't take two acres. Like we just did one on Lake Drive. I think they had like half an acre and most of it was wetlands. They still figure out how to put septic.
So the bottom line is, given the number of units and the average amount of land per lot surrounding a unit, even if it had to be wells and septic on the same lot, it would, it does not seem to be a problem.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I mean, this is obviously some pretty fancy math and I'm barely able to follow it. But, I mean, I guess my question really is, like, under either scenario, we're really not discussing any larger issues about, you know, setbacks or driveway lengths or, you know, some of these factors that really we'll have to go into, you know, the creation of any kind of reasonable and acceptable plan.
Yeah, I think that's right. This is strictly a...
Acreage and build-out, you know.
Well, that part, Carl, would come under the conservation analysis and findings process. And that's where, that's where you take these numbers and turn them into a design on the ground, a plan that you folks would be reviewing. And mostly, you'd be looking for the appropriateness of the development site and what's preserved. And is it, is that what really is meaningful to be preserved on that piece of land? So that, it would be at that stage that you folks would review that. But these are the numbers everyone would have in front of them. They know how many units are going to go in there. They know how much open space is going to have to be found to be preserved on the site. And then you get into the, then you get into the plan.
No, I mean, I've toured around that property for years and talked to all kinds of people about it. And, you know, I mean, I think there's, there's two things. I mean, one is the upland, which is, you know, definitely being, has been, you know, eyeballed by Berkshire Natural Resources for years as part of their Yocum Ridge conservation. And then I think the other fact is, you know, the, one of the things that we did at the Land Trust was, you know, sort of prioritize the preservation of the approaches to town. And, I mean, this is not exactly an approach to town, but it's very visible space with this, you know, terrific open frontage. You know, and I don't know what to say about the poor old house, but the, but, you know, having that cut up, cut up into building lots would, would make a big difference to the, to the character of the neighborhood. I don't know. I mean, I feel like there's a lot of land there and some of it's, you know, kind of well out of view and private and lovely. Wetlands issues don't seem to be that complicated. But anyway, these are interesting numbers to have. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Marie?
Yeah, I think we're not doing any permit on any, you know, given anything. I think we just asked Jeff to compare on a tract of land here the difference in what we could do with density-negative and density-neutral and how this would look. I think that's all we were doing here, this exercise.
Yeah, I think...
You know, it hasn't got anything to do with specific anything, I think.
Right. There's no permit in front of us that we're applying this to. That's a long way out. I do think that, relevant to your comment, Carl, about the nature of the property, its location in town, I think it's important footnote number seven that Jeff highlighted. In a conventional development, subdivision development, he's saying that the front area would have to be developed. And I think one of the, one of the few things, if there was anything that was attractive about the owner's last proposal several years ago, it was that that front area, that front lawn that continues to be mowed, would be kept open and not built on. But what Jeff is saying, if I understood you right, Jeff, is that under a conventional subdivision development, the front area would be, or could be, built on, correct?
Yes. I think, I think under the, yeah, because that's a sizable portion of the developable area on that site. Under the, under either NHRPZ scenario, especially if you had sewer, I guess there's a sewer line that runs by there, the development, whether it be 56 units or 34, 34 would be easier, could possibly go behind the main house. And my sense of that property is, it kind of goes up from the road and it kind of crests at the house and then levels off and drops down a little bit, which would render it fairly invisible or inconspicuous from the roadway. And design might not have to breach the wetlands at the rear and go across. That area could be used for recreation, could be an amenity. It could be bridle trails through there, other types of things for the residents. But you'd have that design flexibility within the NHRPZ process that I don't think you would have with conventional. My take on it is conventional would pretty much take up most of the developable area in order to get all the houses in at the lot sizes and the frontages that you have in your zoning bylaw. These are enormous lots that you require. Four acres with 300 feet of frontage is a huge, huge thing. Two acres with 250 feet of frontage is, is, is pretty huge. I think you'd need all that developable land to get all those units in there.
Um, Jeff, question for you, just to follow up on, on Carl's point. I thought I had heard you say previously that once you've gone through the worksheet and you've arrived at your building sites or, or envelopes, that that's it, that, you know, other than the number of lots, in terms of setbacks and so on, they can do whatever they want. Could you clarify that for me, please?
Yeah, there, there's a difference here. At least the way the bylaw is written right now, there aren't any lot setbacks other than, I guess, 10 feet from any lot line. But that, that's once the, the developable areas and the lots have been established. The whole conservation analysis and findings process is, is what determines where the, where the developable areas are going to go.
Right, but, but once those are established, it's pretty much, you know, free rein in terms of what happens within those building sites. Is that correct?
If you're comfortable with that. If you're not, you can, you can rein it in a little bit and put some, put some standards in there.
But currently there are none.
No, and, and most of these don't have them. But that doesn't mean they can't be there. If you, if you're nervous about something, you can, you can put something in.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear because Carl had asked that question, so I just wanted sort of to understand that part better. Thank you.
Are there any specific standards in the existing cluster zoning? With regard to that, with setbacks and, and driveway lengths and so forth?
Well, in the subdivision bylaw, I believe there are some. I know there's, unless, I think there's, the state sets it at, Jeff, you might know this, some at 20 feet, I believe, in the standard subdivision.
You mean for frontage?
I, I'd have to pull it up to double check it, but I, I think I saw some wording about that. And then there was also some wording about not having roads, dead end roads beyond a certain length. So.
Those, those standards, the, the dead end standard would be in your subdivision regulations, if you have one. I, I think you do.
I think it's 500 feet in our, in our subdivision regulations for a dead end, nothing beyond 500 feet setback. I'd have to look it up.
Right. So, so that would remain. That, that wouldn't change. You, you could still waive it if you decided to as a planning board, but.
I'm sorry?
That's, if you have a 500-foot dead end limit in your subdivision regulations, which is usually where it's, usually where it's found for a new road, that would stay. You'd still have that, you'd still have the ability to waive it for cause, which apparently you have many times. But it, but it, but it's still there.
Yeah.
And, and if you wanted to have lot setbacks other than 10 feet from any property line, which I think is what is in here, I, I've written so many of them, I, you know, they changed a little bit. You could change those too, if you felt houses needed to be farther from lot line. I think Patrick has his hand up, I see.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry. I can't hear you, Patrick.
Of the front lawn was always a feature of the cottage era state bylaws in their various iterations. So the reason why I believe that the prior proposal from Mr. Sheehan did not include development of the front lawn was because it was protected as part of the vision for how you protect a great estate. Okay? And, and I guess my larger point is that I think you're comparing this option to a conventional subdivision, but neither of these options has anywhere near the flexibility on use, on, on scale, or on really vision that the current cottage era bylaw contains. And I'm curious how the board, if, and how the board plans on reconciling the flexibility that the current law, i.e. the bylaw, the cottage era state bylaw, provides both the town and the developers in a proposal compared to this, which frankly strikes me as much more restrictive.
Wayne.
I agree. I think we're comparing apples and oranges. I think this was an exercise to show people what a subdivision on a familiar piece of property could look like. And while it, it may be helpful to some in that regard, you know, really the property was proposed with a hotel and with a whole bunch of other stuff too, that I think don't relate well to what's presented here and it wasn't designed to, Jeff, I understand that. But to Patrick's point, I think the two are separate, but I think this serves to show people what could happen on that purely as an open piece of land. And it was, we, we requested that. We requested that Jeff do this so that a familiar piece of property was in mind rather than an abstract place in Shrewsbury or something. So I think the discussion on this is, is what it is, but the cottage area is, is another issue, I do.
I'd admire even at this point, I said that any cottage era add-on would be subject to the same provisions as this update to the bylaw. I just, I'm not saying that's right or wrong. I'm just saying, like, that's the path that it's, it's very much at odds, I guess, with what the current flexibility is.
Right, and we vacillated back and forth between including and not including and whether it was beneficial to have this as part of cottage era. We've, we've gone back a couple of different times. I've always been one to separate it. So, yeah, here we are.
Jeff.
You have a cottage era bylaw that has been through a, a number of iterations. It's been joined to and separated from the NHRPZ a, a time or two. But it, it's still sitting out there and we worked on it for, for quite a while. While Christine was, was there. And then the, the focus became this. So that bylaw still sits there. I, I was, I was kind of happy with it. So Patrick, if, if somebody wanted to, to, to come in to do a project like a cottage era restoration, that they wouldn't be doing this. This is a residential subdivision. I mean, this is what would happen if Mr. Sheehan gave up on, on any other proposal and, and just wanted to, to cash out and, and develop it conventionally. Maybe demolish the house in the process. So that cottage era bylaw is still there. I, I think we advanced it quite a ways. I thought it was pretty good. It's got a great upfront process with lots of involvement. Pre-application involvement, includes the select board and other boards. And so just don't forget, that's out there. And if somebody wanted to do a project like that, that's, that's what they would come under, not this.
But if you've, if you've adopted this proposal and then you say, well, we really like the idea of a development up there, but you just approved a proposal that is so restrictive, wouldn't it be at odds with something that then wants to maybe add some more density in, in, in a place like that? When you've just said, no, we've taken the most restrictive idea that we can come up with. But now, on the other hand, we, we want to do more density. I, I just don't see that it's, it, it fits well with what's there now. And, and I think it's at odds with each other.
Cottage era, well, really what this is, is an alternative to conventional subdivision development, which cuts up most of the property, doesn't leave any open space behind, would, would bulldoze everything that's out there and, and, and just give you a bunch of, of new houses. That, that's what NHRPZ is an alternative to. If, if, if you really wanted to, to do cottage era development, that whole bylaw is written with incentives in it. The developer needs to preserve the, the historic structures that are on the site and the grounds, the landscaping and some of the features that are on the site for historic purposes and for appearance purposes. And in exchange for that, they get greater flexibility to do other things with different types of uses and densities and stuff like that, you know, along the lines of what Mr. Sheehan proposed. You know, his bargain was, I'm going to preserve this house. I'm going to fix this whole thing up and it's going to be beautiful again. The lawns are going to be beautiful and I'm going to plant all kinds of trees and it's going to really look kind of the same from the road. But you're going to let me do all this stuff right behind it. So cottage era is, is kind of a bargain that the town makes with the developer. Each gets something out of it.
And I think with what we have in place now, which is special permit, you have an opportunity to discuss what it is you like or don't like and will allow and won't allow. Isn't that correct?
You mean under your current cottage era?
Yes, yes.
Yes, kind of, kind of like the draft that we've been working on. They're, they're, they're not entirely dissimilar. Yeah, it's a bit, it's a bit of, of, of a give and take. I know there was an attempt. One of the, one of the complaints about the cottage era bylaw before was that there were no limits on what could be proposed. It didn't seem like there were limits and it appeared that the desist of proposal was too much. So one of the ideas was to, to cap, cap what could be proposed so that the developer didn't get too carried away. And I believe we were wrestling with those kinds of numbers and figures in our iteration of the new CEE bylaw when, when work stopped. So that, so that there would be a ceiling on what could be proposed.
Remind me when we last distributed a draft of revised CEEB?
It, it was, it was back when Christine was on the board and was.
Like a year ago or something.
My contact person.
Draft number one was dated March 19th, 2021. And I don't think there's been a draft number two.
No, not the cottage era.
If, we can, we can send it to you, Carl, if you don't have it.
Um, yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not sure if I have that one, but anyway.
Yeah, it predates your election and.
And your, okay.
What sort of input, what sort of instructions and input were you given, Jeff, for the first draft of the cottage era state bylaw that you did?
I'm looking here, this, this, I'm looking here and there is a draft two. The last draft I have. Yeah, March 22nd is draft two.
That's for this, the cottage era state bylaw?
Yes.
There's two, there's, was a second draft?
Two days after the first draft. Or three days.
What marching orders were you given for that, for those, for those drafts, Jeff?
Oh, Lord, I was giving, I was given lots of, lots of orders. Do this, do that, don't do this. I, I, I can't remember the particulars, but we discussed it. It wasn't just Christine instructing me. We discussed it as, a, as a board. It looks like it's six pages. At one point, it was, it was made to go on the end of, of the NHRPZ as section H. It, it would have been, it would have been a possible variant of an NHRPZ. And, and the idea there was the benefits of the, of all the open space requirements and the conservation analysis and, and, and findings process would be brought in. So every one of these would have lots of open space with it and it would have a conservation analysis. So it was, it was grafted onto the thing and then it was taken off of it, but, but yeah, I've got two drafts, two drafts here.
Does any, does anybody know that they have a second, a draft number two?
I do not.
I looked through my papers earlier today and all I found was draft number one.
I must have it at home.
Jeff, could you?
I can send it.
Jennifer's going to look for it, but if you have it in digital form, could you send it to, to me or to Jennifer, please?
You bet.
We, I think we have draft number one, or some of us do. And we can make draft number one available to those of us who don't have it.
We also received it. I have, we received it in October. I mean, I, I got it 319 and I also got it in October when we started talking about it.
Right, and then we put it aside again.
Right, and then we kind of said, let's go with draft eight.
But the date of draft number one at the bottom is March 19.
Still 319.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I, at some point I resurrected it and sent it around again.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I, I just had one more question. I'm sorry. So Jeff, can you tell me, remind me, because I'm so confused with how many drafts that we've had. If someone has a, say, a 500-acre parcel of land and the NHRPZ is only for housing, correct? They can't put like a resort in there or a restaurant or something? It's only for housing?
I believe it's written for residential subdivisions.
So they couldn't do anything else with it except for residential housing?
I think that's Patrick's point, that the existing cottage era bylaw.
No, for just a regular.
Oh, for residential, yeah.
Like a regular 500-acre parcel of land that's open, you know, say it's like a farmland, right? That there's no water issue, there's no mountain, steep mountain. It's just a nice field. Only be developed for housing, correct, in the new bylaw?
The NHRPZ is, is zoning that, that attaches, it's de-zoning for a residential subdivision. So if, if someone proposes a residential subdivision, like many of the ones I visited when I was out there, they would be subject to the NHRPZ provisions.
So I think the answer is yes to your question.
Yeah, they're restricted.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments for Jeff before we let him go?
So I have a, a version of the cottage era state bylaw that's dated October. It's, it's draft number two and it's dated October 11th, 2021.
Does it show differences from draft number one? And does it have comments, you know, sidebar comments and?
It does.
Okay.
So draft one was dated, if the footer is accurate, draft one was dated March 19th. And this one, this is labeled as a document as October 11th. And actually, I'm not seeing comments in the sidebar, but that might just be because I don't have my track changes turned on.
Yeah, the, the one I have, I don't think it has any comments anymore. The one I have, it's got a lot of like yellow highlights.
Yep, that's it. That's, that's what I have, Jeff. Yep.
There's some red highlights and, and the footer says draft.
Says what, draft two?
Well, it says draft number one, 3/19, 3/1921, but the title of the document is draft two.
Right, and it says, before that draft number one, it says proposed CEE section H for Stockbridge. Is that right, Jeff? Is that what you have?
It is.
And then below that, it says text in yellow highlight, needs further information or discussion?
Yes.
But that's on draft number one.
Yeah. It sounds like the October draft is the same as the March 22nd draft number two. Does that sound right, Jeff?
Yeah, I don't think I did any work on this thing after March.
Right.
Except you sent it to us in October.
Right.
And I think it somehow acquired an October date by virtue of being resurrected and sent then.
Yeah, I think Jennifer added that, may have added, I have a vague memory, I think Jennifer's here, that she may have added that draft one part to the footnote. So that might not have been, and it's a different font, so that would potentially support that theory.
Yeah.
The last time I did anything to it, the last date modified I have is 3/22/21.
Yeah.
So we had proposed this as a rider onto the NHRPZ. And at what point did that, did we decide to drop that?
Because we were having too much difficulty getting through the new proposed bylaw.
Sure.
We decided not to include cottage era until we could figure out NHRPZ.
I mean, Carl, I felt that having them together as one bylaw was just too much.
Well, just doing the math here, I'm sorry. I was pretty good in algebra.
Patrick's got his hand up.
Yeah, Patrick.
I want to reiterate that, you know, my dad raised a family of five in Stockbridge, a 1,470 square feet house, the house I'm in right now. And this bylaw and the direction it's going in is going to create incentives, because there's so few units, to build multimillion dollar homes, because that's the only way you're going to be able to afford to pay for the land. And I think that you can create much smaller units that'll be great for seniors. According to statistics, 51% of seniors have to downsize at some point, okay? And you could create smaller units for starter families, workforce housing, have, you know, no more density from the point of view of square feet, but more density from the point of view of human beings in smaller units. I really think that the direction this should go in is to really create incentives for those senior homes and those starter homes and not limit it to 32 or 50 units on hundreds and hundreds of acres. This is going to basically create more and more homes that are going to use two months a year and further erode the residential nature of the town, in my opinion.
As long as we have two and four acre lots, that's...
Yeah.
That's our bylaw.
Zoning already allows it, yeah. But thank you for that comment, Patrick. Unless there are other comments or questions for Jeff, I think we can let him go and proceed. Jeff, thank you for your work and we'll be in touch.
Okay, I will send, I will send what I have as the draft number two, my latest cottage era. It's still designed to be grafted onto the end of NHRPZ, but that's not where it has to go. It could be pretty...
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Bye, Jeff.
Good night. Okay. Before we move on to the next item, I think this relates to the item we're currently on and were on with Jeff in the agenda. I've been thinking about where we stand with the main bylaw, the NRHPZ, the NHRPZ residential bylaw, and the difficulty we've had in coming to agreement over many months and years and many drafts. And I think reluctantly, I think it's time to make a decision about proceeding with this bylaw. And I'm speaking of the NRHPZ bylaw, not the cottage era state bylaw, both the bylaw we have and the draft that Jeff has done, just the main bylaw that we've spent so much time on. So...
Want me to get Jennifer? Do you want me to get Jennifer? Should she be?
Yeah, I guess so. I guess she's going through her files. Ah, here she is.
Oh, she printed them all out.
What did you find?
Well, I found that they both say draft one on the bottom.
Both March 19th and March 22nd?
They both say draft one, March 19th. But there's, there are a little bit, things that are taken out of the second one, which is going to happen here, which is in the first one. So I think there was two, we probably commented on the first one, and he took some of the things out.
I think what he's going to do is send us the October version, which presumably...
Probably, that's probably what this is.
Is the second one with items taken out from the first version.
This, I'm just, I just think, this was the first one that was connected to his NRHPZ bylaw. So, and I just pinched at that last page.
Yeah, this is. Cottage era state bylaw, draft number three, dated before, dated before draft number one.
No, but this is from the NRHPZ bylaw.
Oh, I see.
Oh, I acted this at the end.
I see, okay.
That's all this.
Okay, so it's not quite as crazy as I made it sound. Okay. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Coming back to my point, and thanks for doing that research. Given where we stand with respect to the main bylaw, the draft bylaw that's in draft number eight, after all the discussions and back and forth we've had, both among ourselves and with the consultant, I'd like to make a motion that we cease working on the NRHPZ bylaw. And to the extent we decide we want to do it, focus in due course on the cottage era state bylaw, both the one we have currently on the books and if we find it appropriate, the version that, or elements of the version that Jeff drafted for us. So my motion is to drop the NHRPZ bylaw from our work going forward. Is there a second?
I would second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I would just say that I think we've thoroughly investigated this, NHRPZ. I think we really have, for the better part of two years, looked at this thing and tossed it back and forth and tried to manipulate it in such a way that we all could agree on or not, or come to a consensus not to agree. And we haven't been able to do either. And I think it was, I think it was a good thing to do. I think we fully explored it, but I think in the end of it all, we're here now with something that I don't think has a good chance of moving forward beyond our board. Go ahead.
Marie.
I agree. This is not the way I wanted this to end, but I think we need to move forward. And I don't think we're, I don't think we're together on this and we have explored, we have explored it a lot and we've tried and we seem to be split as a board and seem to be split as a town. And there's been a lot of negative words about this bylaw before it even got out. And I think people are negative about it from Stockbridge updates and other things. So I agree with Wayne that we've worked hard on it and we need to move forward. And, you know, maybe in 20 years, somebody will have the stomach to try this again if we still have land in Stockbridge. So I agree with, I think we need to move forward and work on the cottage era bylaw and try to get something good for the town.
Any other comments from members of the board?
Yeah, I would just say that, I guess I differ from Marie in that I don't think that it's so much that people are negative. I think that people are concerned. And this represents a significant change and departure in some ways. And I think that before embarking on something like this, you really have to think seriously about updating your master plan. And I know master plans are involved and they take time, but I think it's really important that you have that plan in place before you take on something that potentially involves a lot of risk in terms of the direction that the town goes in.
Thank you, Kate. Anybody else?
Nancy?
I agree totally with Wayne and Marie. I think that we've done our best and no one can say that we didn't do our best on it.
Yeah, I think it's possible that we'll get some, the blowback about spending money on a consultant and taking two years to think through this, but it's a complicated topic. It deserved the kind of attention we gave it over a protracted period. I think we needed a consultant to help us, even though not all of us agreed with his approach. I questioned how far we would have gotten without a consultant. And, you know, I think we gave it a good shot and plenty of time and energy. In fact, I don't think, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I don't think we've spent a huge amount on this. We certainly have not spent Jeff's full budget this year. We wouldn't spend it last year fully. So yes, money has been expended, but I think for a good purpose and for a serious topic that needed professional consultation. So I have no problem defending the time and the expense associated with what we've done here. Any other comments?
I do have the numbers here and the board has spent 12,000, approximately 12,500. And I would say that perhaps we did not need two consultants. That's my comment on that.
Need to take a vote on that?
Yes, we do. I guess I want to make sure. Patrick? Again, you're muted.
I'm a believer that giving people options is not a bad idea. Now, you've got a cottage era estate bylaw on the books, which is one path someone could go if they decide to develop a property. This would be, you know, that involved a cottage era, you know, building. This is simply, could be just another pathway that someone could go where basically because they want to minimize the cost of subdivision, that they want to go on this. You know, I never understood why you were positioning this as an either/or for the current subdivision. And you spent like, I don't know, 20 or 30 grand developing it. Maybe position this as another option for a subdivision. There are aspects of this around conservation, which are really quite good for the town. And I'm kind of a little bit perplexed why, after all this work, you would simply abandon it rather than maybe position it as another option at the landowners, in the landowner's toolkit, to pursue how they want to develop their land and one that might be not only better for the land, but also far less expensive, which is the whole benefit of NHRPZ. It's supposed to be less expensive to the developer and provide conservation for the town. So, you know, I guess, I'm just a little confused, but, you know, and I certainly wouldn't worry about what people think of it. I mean, you know.
I'm not worried about what people think. I just think we're at a point where it's pretty clear that in anything approaching its present form, unless we start all over, there is no majority on this board to approve this bylaw. I mean, that's the reality.
Right.
I mean, I'm just facing the facts, Patrick. If we took a vote to proceed with this bylaw, the best we could do, I mean, I'm not going to, the motion is to cease working on this bylaw. I'm not proposing a new one. But if I were to propose a motion to continue, to approve this bylaw, just say that, to approve this bylaw, I would lose. It would be voted down by at least four to three. And I don't see, even if we turned one of those votes from negative to positive, I don't see taking a four to three planning board vote in favor of a bylaw to town meeting and arguing that a divided planning board's decision should be endorsed by the town.
I hear your point, but I think that this is just taking a lot of energy out of the board. I mean, we get a sign permit, we get a sign request in front of us and...
We're not getting anywhere.
We're spending so much time on this that, you know, they're not even familiar with the signed bylaw, which is already on the books. So it just seems like it's taking a lot of energy and it's from the board. It's a distraction, maybe a way to look at it is to, we have all the material that Jeff has done, has written up for us. So, you know, maybe a way to think about it is just, it's on a back burner and potentially it can be picked up at some point. But just speaking for myself, I would welcome a break from it.
Thank you, Kate. Gary, do you have any thoughts or are you, is silence a scent?
I would agree with your motion.
Okay, if there are no further comments, can we, unless there are?
I think Wayne has...
No, I'm sorry, no?
I don't think Carl spoke. Did Carl speak?
Oh, I just, I completely concur with Bill in terms of the reality of taking, you know, what we've got right now to town meeting, just doesn't feel like it's likely to fly.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further comments, let's proceed to a vote. It's been moved and seconded to stop work on this bylaw.
Yep.
Aye. That means stopping work. Yes.
I'm, Wayne?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Carl?
That's a yes. Unanimity. It's a beautiful thing.
There you go.
In light of that vote, I don't think we need to proceed to the third item on the agenda, unless somebody has other business to bring up. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second. I beat you, Gary.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much.